All right, we're going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for November the 12th, 2019. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, for coming out on a cold night that is only going to get colder. We've got a few big things we've got to work on tonight and a couple of good proclamations that we're going to work on. Does any council member have comments they'd like to add?
I just wanted to say, we had a good Veterans Day parade and prayer service in the park down here afterwards, and thank you, everyone, who came out to that.
All right, city manager's comments.
Also, I'd like to just take a moment to recognize Battalion Chief Mike Wise, also Dr. Mike Fleener, who is the OMD for the Fire Department, and Todd Gentry. They were recently recognized by the Governor of Virginia for their service at the EMS Awards banquet. And if I can get the specifics pulled up, Battalion Chief Wise received a Regional Award for Outstanding Contribution to EMS for Children. Dr. Mike Fleener received a Regional Award for the Outstanding EMS Physician, and Sergeant Todd Gentry received a Regional Award for the Outstanding Pre-Hospital Provider. So, they work hard to provide good services for our citizens, and I think these awards show that. I'd also like to thank the Police Department and the Fire Department for the incident that they covered on Friday night. I happened to be at the scene, and it was truly probably the first cold night of the year, and the services they provide to the victim and their family was outstanding, and our hearts go out to the family for their loss, but just to see what they were able to do that night was tremendous.
All right, thank you. So, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. We have one person signed up for that, and that is Mr. Jack Johnson.
I'm Jack Johnson. I live at 209 Sunrise Street. I'm a taxpayer. We have got a serious problem in Bristol, Virginia that we're all overlooking: safety. Talking with the Chief of Police, he's meeting four officers. I have talked to our legislation people, they have given me response back and told me some avenues, which Randy has the details. This grant must be done by January 1st. If we don't get this grant in next year's budget, we better have four police officers in the budget next year. My neighborhood is riddled with drugs, less than a quarter mile from one of the schools. Folks, I mean, I'm for having good schools and everything, but the number-one priority in this city right now is to get it a safe city. I've got an 89-year-old man living across from a drug house, and he's lived on that street for 60 years and everything. And, folks, you know, I have talked to the State Police Sergeant, I have talked to Israel Gwynn, Congressman Morgan, and the Senator. The Governor's got a letter, and all of them, basically except the Governor, has responded back. Senator Carrico responded back and got the ball rolling. Him and Jerry Gwynn done a really good job. But, folks, before we go spending any more money going up to Exit 5, we need to secure Bristol. Bristol is in terrible shape. I mean, you know, nice schools, good. Like I said, I support that 100%, but I don't support that Exit 5 deal when that would have put four officers on the street. So, if we don't get this grant, we need to put four in it. I'll come back next and find out we don't get the grant. My next, my third step is, I'm going to fill this auditorium up with people. I promise you that. And our code guy, he's going backwards. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. City Manager, do you have anything you want to address there?
The grant that Mr. Johnson's talked to you about, that's a grant that was actually allowed for the City of Bristol to obtain, school resource officers several years ago for each of our schools. We do apply for that grant whenever funding is available for it within the city. What happens is, it allows you to hire officers. The first year, 75% of that is paid from outside funds. The second year, 50% is paid with outside funds, and then the city has to pick up the 50%. The third year, the 25% is paid with outside funds, and the city picks up 75%, and in the fourth year, the city pays for 100% of those officers' salaries and benefits. It's something that I know that Chief Austin and I have talked about, and it's something that he's willing to apply for. It's just that at some point, we'd have to make a decision, are we going to fund these police officers for that four-year term during the lifetime of that grant?
All right, thank you very much. So, on to the regular agenda. Item 1 is Joint Public Hearing with the Planning Commission on Special Exception Application 5, 2019, for a barber shop at 20 Peters Street, tax map number 34341B, 42B. If the Planning Commission would call themselves to order, please.
I call this Joint Public Session of the Bristol, Virginia Planning Commission to Order.
All right, and we'll go ahead and open our hearing, and you all can open your hearing. I should have told you to wait at the microphone.
I hereby open the public hearing.
All right, staff comments.
Mayor and council members and Chairman and Planning Commission members, as on the presentation here in front of you, this is a special exception request involving property at 20 Peters Street. It's actually three small parcels put together. It's about 7,500 square feet or two-tenths of an acre together. It's currently zoned R2, single and two-family residential. The desired use from the applicant is a barber shop. Barber shop is not a permitted-by-right use in an R2, therefore, he has applied for a special exception for the Planning Commission to consider a recommendation and you all to consider their recommendation, that being done after this public hearing at subsequent meetings. The required public hearing was advertised in the paper twice, and all the adjoining property owners were notified by certified mail. There were four of those. Let me just, just a little bit more. Peters Street turns off of West State Street at, right where the West State Street Furniture Store is and Callan's Automotive on that corner. This house is at the very next block back. This map is a little hard to see here, but this is our zoning map showing one block back, the first house on the left, as you go north on Peters, is 20 Peters Street. It is at the edge of the R2 zoning, where the R2 zoning starts. As you can see, it borders the B3 zoning that's on West State Street. As far as adjoining residences, the closest one would be kind of catty-corner across here, I think it's 17 Peters. There's vacant property to the north of the house, there's vacant property to the west of the house, and vacant lot across Peters Street. The closest building, really, is this business building right here in the B3 zone. Not sure you can see this too well, but the applicant has done a sketch to show the location of the house. It's about a 1,500-square-foot house. The operation of the barber shop, he's proposing to use two rooms of the house, which would be about 350 square feet, and there is room for parking back here off of the alley and potentially a handicap spot in the front, but until we kind of look at that more, we'll know better. But, propose right now, if handicapped is in this area, there would need to be a walkway handicapped accessible because the front entrance would be on the front. So, from the, of course, the reason for the public hearing, any public comments can be made, and then following that, next week, the Planning Commission will make their recommendation and bring that forward to you all at your next meeting. And there's just some more pictures that show, oops, keep doing the wrong thing, sorry. The alley, and I don't know why I'm drawing a blank on the name of the alley.
King's Mountain.
King's Mountain. King's Mountain Alley, thank you. You can see the proximity to, this is the auto parts store that's right across the alley, so very close to business uses that are on State Street or on that first block. So, that's all my short presentation, and the applicant and property owner are here if there are any questions.
All right, so, before we get into any questions we might have, there are no public comments, I'll just note that. Do we have any questions for the city planner, for the applicant?
The only question I had was about parking, and I saw, I read something to where the angled parking may be reconsidered to be straight-on because of the traffic flow back and forth in the alley, or is that set the way it's supposed to be right there, the way it's depicted?
Actually, I think there's been discussion either way, and I think it really doesn't matter on that. I had initially gotten feedback that straight-on would be safer, well, better, because two-way, it's a two-way alley. But, the alley is narrow-ish, so, but it really, I think, would be up to our engineering department when they review the formal site plan on that. I think the applicant, it doesn't matter to them either way, I don't think. They're going to have to pave the parking spot.
There's not enough room on the front of the property right to have any parking, right, on the street side?
Not sure. Probably not.
Any other questions? All right, if there are no more questions, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and the Planning Commission can do the same and adjourn.
Close the public hearing.
Of the Planning Commission and close this joint session of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 2, Proclamation Recognizing Small Business Saturday. Staff report.
Counsel, we have a resolution. It's a joint resolution with the City of Bristol, Tennessee, recognizing Small Business Saturday, which this year would occur on November the 30th of 2019.
All right. Item 2 is reading of the proclamation, so I will do that. All right. Whereas the cities of Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia celebrate our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently more than 30 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 64% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years, and whereas small business employees over 49, small businesses employ over 49.2% of all businesses in the private sector in the United States, and whereas, on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at a small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants, and whereas, 70% of adult U.S. consumers are aware of Small Business Saturday, and whereas, 42% of consumers who reportedly shopped at small, independently-owned businesses on Small Business Saturday did so with friends and family, and 83% reported encouraging others to also shop or dine small, and whereas, among consumers who said they participated on the day, 41% reported that they shopped small online on Small Business Saturday. And whereas, among companies that were planning promotions on Small Business Saturday, 92% said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season, and whereas, the cities of Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia support our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, we, Margaret Farinam and Neil Osborne, the mayors of Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday, and encourage the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses emergence on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. All right, I'm looking for a motion and a second on this.
A move that we adopt the proclamation?
Second.
Okay, so, a motion from Mr. Farnham and second from Mr. Mumpower. Is there any discussion?
Encourage people to shop downtown, shop locally, as the resolution states, it helps keep more money in our community, so it's happy to support that.
All right, very good. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. Item 3, Proclamation Recognizing the Boys and Girls Club of the Mountain Empire. Staff report.
Counsel, you have before you a proclamation recognizing the 70th anniversary of the Boys and Girls Club of the City of Bristol, Virginia. The Boys and Girls Clubs provides opportunities for boys and girls in the City of Bristol to learn healthy lifestyles, have opportunities to have a better chance for academic success, and to build character and citizenship so that they can be productive members of society. They have distinctly served our community for 70 years, and many people that have positions within this city, whether public or private, have had an opportunity to gain insight and knowledge from the Boys and Girls Club of the City of Bristol.
All right, thank you. Reading of the proclamation. Whereas the young people of Bristol, Virginia are tomorrow's leaders, and whereas many young people need professional youth services to help them achieve their full potential, and whereas the Boys and Girls Club of the Mountain Empire has served our youth for 70 years now, beginning in 1949, and whereas the Boys and Girls Club instill young people with self-confidence to believe they can succeed at anything they put their mind to and stand at the forefront of efforts in the areas of academic success, healthy lifestyles, and good character and citizenship, and whereas the Boys and Girls Club organizations in Virginia help ensure young people have a safe, supportive place to spend time and will provide them with quality youth development programs, now therefore be a proclaim by the Bristol, Virginia City Council, that we recognize and commend the Boys and Girls Club of the Mountain Empire for providing the young people of our community with critical youth development programming adopted this 12th day of November, 2019. Looking for a motion and a second.
A move that we adopt the proclamation?
Second.
Okay, so, motion from the Vice Mayor and second from Mr. Farnham. Is there any discussion on this? All right, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Do we have anybody here in attendance from Boys and Girls Club? All right.
Mayor and city council members, on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, I'm Dick Collins, the CEO of the club, and we want to say thank you very much for this recognition and proclamation. As you stated, the Boys and Girls Club has made a big difference in this community. Started out with Homer Naev, who was a police officer, and Charles Lowry, who got involved in noticing a need for the Boys Club in the city. Started out as a Boys Club, turned in 1992 into Boys and Girls Clubs, serving thousands of youth. And every day, we're there. I just left the club, and there's over 100 kids right around the block that are getting a hot meal and getting programs and trying to make a better life, and we thank you for the recognition. We're actually having a 70th anniversary celebration Thursday at the train station and have over 100 and some people that are already attending. We thank you for the recognition, and we hope that we can continue to make a quality difference in the lives of the youth of our community.
Item 4 is Proclamation for Adoption Awareness Month. Staff report.
Counsel, November is Adoption Awareness Month. In the Commonwealth of Virginia, there are over 5,000 children who are in the foster care program, and more than 600 of those children have a goal for adoption or place in an adoptive home. Not all children that are waiting to be adopted are newborns. Many are older who do not have a place to go to and who are unfortunately a little more difficult to adopt due to the fact of their age. So, we want to recognize that this is Adoption Awareness Month and let people know that there are children in our systems, not only here in the City of Bristol, but across the Commonwealth that need a stable home in order to learn the skills necessary to continue to be a good member of society, and hopefully people will take cognizance of that and, if they feel so in their heart, to adopt, that they would do so this month.
All right, thank you very much. Reading of the proclamation. I should start charging by the word on these. Whereas the health and safety of all Virginians is important to the happiness, prosperity, and well-being of our Commonwealth's families and communities, and whereas every child in Virginia, regardless of physical, medical, or emotional challenges, age, or race, needs love, support, security, and a place to call home, and whereas children thrive and reach their full potential when given a firm foundation and love from a family with a desire to parent a child who would otherwise not have permanency in their lives, and whereas, in addition to adoption from foster care, it is appropriate to recognize those who have chosen other adoption options to build a family, and whereas it is important for every child who cannot be raised by a birth parent to find a permanent home because children have better outcomes when they are raised in families, and whereas there are more than 5,000 children in Virginia's foster care program, and more than 600 children have the goal of adoption and are available for placement in an adoptive home, and whereas not all children waiting to be adopted are newborns, many older youth who live in foster care desire to be adopted, just as many siblings who are separated in foster care long to be adopted by the same family, and all of these children want a sense of belonging that adoptive parents can provide, and whereas Virginia Heart Galleries have been created through the Commonwealth to provide much-needed exposure to the faces of our waiting children, and these endeavors can continue with unprecedented successes in finding loving and permanent homes, now therefore I, Neil Osborne, do here recognize November, 2019, as Adoption Awareness Month in the City of Bristol, Virginia, and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens adopted this 12th day of November, 2019. Looking for a motion and a second.
A move that we adopt the proclamation?
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Farnham and second from Mr. Mumpower. Is there any discussion? All right, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
I believe we have some people here to accept the proclamation. Would you all like to say a few words?
On behalf of Bristol, Virginia Department of Social Services, we would like to thank you for this proclamation, and we would also like to just let you know that in Bristol this month, we have the Heart Gallery at the library that have pictures of children from our region that are available for adoption. We also have had a young man from Bristol who was available for adoption selected for the Governor's Mansion's Heart Gallery this year, and we thank you very much because we feel this is very important. Children do deserve a permanent home and a forever family, and there are a lot of children in the state that deserve to have this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Item 5 is Resolution of Support for Virginia's Great Valley Lewis and Clark Eastern Legacy Trail. Staff report.
Before you, Counsel, it's a resolution to support the Virginia's Great Valley Lewis and Clark Eastern Legacy Trail. In 2015, the General Assembly passed Resolution Number 566 that designated Virginia's Great Valley Lewis and Clark Eastern Legacy Trail. The trail is 258 miles long and passes through 10 counties and 13 cities and towns, including Bristol. There are 20 historic sites connected to Lewis and Clark's expeditions that have been documented, including one at Walnut Grove in Bristol, which is on Lee Highway across from the Home Depot. A sign has been erected at this location to identify and commemorate this history. The all-volunteer organization that has been working on this effort is now seeking funding from the 2020 General Assembly for funds to hire an executive director. Office space at no cost has been offered at the Natural Bridge State Park headquarters. Catherine Brillhart has been serving as a representative from Bristol to the organization. She has provided their department with some background information and a draft resolution of support for the city council to consider. Other Lewis and Clark commemorative sites in the United States have reaped substantial tourism tax dollars to those areas. The draft resolution supports proposed state funding for staff and support for the continued development, implementation, and promotion of Virginia's Great Valley Lewis and Clark Eastern Legacy Trail and its related historic sites.
All right, thank you very much. No one has signed up for public comment on this. I know, would you all like to say a few words about this?
Well, as City Manager Eads mentioned, this is a 258-mile driving trail from Bristol up to Albemarle County and Charlottesville area. We have had a handful of volunteers working on this trail project, researching and designating sites for the past nine years. I serve and have served for about five years as Chair of the Bristol Committee. Also, we have two other contacts for the Bristol Committee, that being Vice Mayor Bill Hartley and also Charles Flanagan, who's with us here tonight. And we appreciate all of the efforts of the volunteers. The connection here of Lewis and Clark is Robert Preston's home at Walnut Grove and at the Lee Highway, and we have a marker there as well. They received a state highway marker, the Bristol Historical Association, who owns the Robert Preston home, last year, and that documented that Clark visited and had breakfast with John Preston at his home there at Walnut Grove. Now, Colonel Preston, Robert Preston, is the father of John Preston, whose home is still there in the original site, but John Preston's home is no longer standing. But, that documentation allowed our committee to provide Lewis and Clark portrait signage, which was installed this year along the highway marker there on Lee Highway. And I know the Bristol Historical Association has done extensive work on the outside as well as the inside of the Robert Preston home, and in future years, hopes to open it up for tours for schoolchildren as well as for tourists coming into our area and local residents. And we are hoping to seek funding from the General Assembly in 2020 so that we can turn these efforts over to an executive director and hopefully a part-time assistants, and also allow for operating expenses for them along the trail, which will provide brochures, maps, information, and hopefully we can have a kiosk there at Natural Bridge. If not, we will look for other areas for a kiosk for this information. But, we would like to have not only signatures from the mayor, but also signatures from the Vice Mayor and all of the city council members on this resolution. I know it was approved by the Abbott and Town Council earlier in November, and it is being presented by another representative in Washington County to the Washington County Board of Supervisors tonight, and we appreciate your diligence in reviewing the material.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Do you all have any questions?
I was just going to say, thank you for coming, and there's so much history all over southwest Virginia, and we have so much right here in Bristol as well, so, a lot of history, a lot of people don't even know about, so, thank you.
All right.
My only question to the City Manager was, is this a resolution that is read by caption-only, or?
I think if counsel wanted to, we could do this by caption-only. It's been on the agenda, it's been posted since Thursday, I believe, and copies are available if necessary.
And honestly, Ms. Brillhart explained it very well, and I would just bore everybody reading it again, so, thank you for explaining it so well. So, I'm looking, so, we're going to read the motion, read the resolution by caption-only, so if you want to do that, okay. So, I'm just going to read the title. Virginia's Great Valley Lewis and Clark Eastern Legacy Trail: Resolution of Support. So, looking for a motion and a second.
A move that we adopt the resolution by caption-only?
Second.
So, motion from Mr. Farnham and second from Mr. Mumpower. Is there any further discussion? Clerk would call the roll, please. Clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right, item six is discussion of school facility needs. So basically what we're gonna do, we're gonna hear from the superintendent on this, and we got a few people signed up for public comment on it, and then we're probably gonna discuss it a little bit. One thing I'd like to say, this is not the public hearing on the school facilities matter, you know, there's no vote being taken on this, we're just talking. So, you know, it's important that we, you know, kind of, you know, stay on topic of the, you know, the fact that we're the funding body for this and we're voting on the funding mechanism to do this, and, you know, I don't think we need any kind of grandstanding or any kind of political points made or anything, so hopefully we can keep it fairly on task. Before I turn it over to the superintendent, I'm gonna do some public comment. First person is Jackie Naflin.
That's fine, I don't mind.
Ginger Fleener.
I feel like I've grown. My name is Ginger Fleener. I live at 239 Sherwood Road. All I'm asking is that in the process of listening to all of these plans and everything, that the families of these children get taken into consideration. There's a lot that they're not as fortunate as we are. I just, I ask that you place yourself in their shoes and think about them, just humble and humility.
Thank you very much. Next person is Brienne Forbes Hubbard.
Good evening. I won't be here for the public hearing, I'll be traveling for Thanksgiving, so you can count this as that. I live at 167 Heritage Drive. I'm here tonight to ask the council to move forward with the plan presented by the school board for a new school. This is not a perfect plan, however, it is the best option we have for our city's children, given Bristol's financial circumstances. Having all our children together from pre-K through graduation will instill a greater sense of citywide community from a young age. It will allow students to benefit from innovative and trauma-responsive programming without having to leave their regular school campus. It will give our children and teachers access to an excellent learning institution, which they deserve. As a resident of the Van Pelt neighborhood, I am happy to continue to work on the best ways to mitigate additional school traffic if it means the best opportunities for our teachers and students. The school board has been considering this issue for years. They are the elected body who bears the responsibility for decisions regarding Bristol schools, and this is the second time they have put forward a plan for this body for action. Our children cannot continue to wait and wait and wait to see if a casino comes to Bristol and with it increased tax revenue. This plan as presented works financially. Our children cannot continue to wait and wait and wait for the educational setting they need to thrive. This plan needs action from the city council, and I urge you to move forward with the plan presented by the school board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Perrigen, the microphone is yours.
I was hoping that Mr. Collins would still be here because out of the, those statistics that he shared, I was a member of the Boys Club when I grew up in Bristol, and it certainly was a great refuge for me, but more so for my parents because they had a good place to get rid of me, as you can imagine. But anyway, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to continue this discussion that we've been having really for the last almost three years now. As you know, Bristol, Virginia Public Schools has been working towards the goal of converting to a two elementary school model since 2011 because our current elementary schools are not accessible, are not fully functional, or are not as safe as we would like for them to be. About a year ago, city council voted three to two against the plan our school board approved by a 5-0 unanimous vote. Since that time, we have provided estimates of doing safe, accessible, and functional renovations, and that plan was not supported by city council. We had a report compiled by the Virginia Department of Education, and those recommendations have not been supported either. We were then challenged to, is that me? We were then challenged by city council to consider a three elementary school model. This suggestion from members of city council included building a school in the center of the city with a preference towards the Kingtown community. Research determined that these options were more expensive than the original Van Pelt plan based on the estimates that we provided. We also determined that these options were not as popular as the original plan, as indicated by over 350 survey responses. Now what we have learned after years of study and discussion about this very important legal and moral issue is that there are no perfect answers that will receive 100% support. What we also heard, especially in recent weeks, is the time for talk and discussion has ended and the time for action has arrived. Our school board voted last week to identify the Van Pelt primary intermediate plan as our top choice after dozens of options have been considered and discussed over the last eight years. Our board has heeded the call for action, and it is my sincere request on their behalf that city council reconsider the comprehensive agreement that you voted against last year by a 3-2 margin, and the city, the reasons that we request that and the reason that we believe that it's different now than it was then, the city is in much better financial shape, our bond rating has increased, interest rates have gone down, and the option is an even better deal than it was this time last year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for questions.
If I can, I think probably what we need to do is do a quick review of what the comprehensive agreement means by moving forward, so I'll let Dr. Perrigen kind of just give a quick overview of what that means and what that makes us accountable for in the future.
True. Under the terms of the statewide law that is the PPEA, the Public Private Education and Infrastructure Act, in order for a school division to move forward with that or any other local entity, they have to have approval from the appropriating body for the comprehensive agreement. And what the comprehensive agreement says, in this case, the comprehensive agreement that we presented for you that's not been changed since last year, is that it would take us to the next step. If we, if the, our school board has already approved that comprehensive agreement, if this council approves it, the financiers and the architects and the contractors would complete the plans. The plans that we have now are currently not complete. They would complete the plans, we would be in at that point for $250,000 regardless of what happened with city council, you know, if we ended up going through with the plan or not. But we would also own the plans. Currently, we just have estimates and drawings and renderings, and this would get us to the full plan. Part of the comprehensive agreement says that if after the final numbers are crunched, if the annual payment comes in above $1.3 million annually, that the deal would be off. However, even if it is under $1.3 million, the annual payment comes in under $1.3 million, the school board has one last action to take before they move forward with that plan. And so really, the comprehensive agreement does not make this a done deal, it just opens the door to the next step, which gives us the final cost, the final numbers, and at the end of the day, in the worst-case scenario, if it doesn't go forward, doesn't go through, we at least own the plans to an 85,000-square-foot building.
Let me start off with a question that is not germane specifically to this plan, but I had someone ask me earlier today. Had you looked at the possibility of closing Highland View and Washington Lee and just doing a massive expansion at Stonewall Jackson? So you'd have Van Pelt and Stonewall only?
Yes, sir. So when the Department of Education came in last spring, they made several recommendations of ways that we could solve our facility crisis. Two of those included something very similar to what you just asked. The first plan was to renovate the existing Stonewall Jackson building and build another, I think it was about 25,000-square-foot building onto that, which would house, in their opinion, the number of students that those three schools combined would do. And the other part of that recommendation, in their recommendation, was they believed that we need a cafeteria at Van Pelt. I think some of you may have attended Van Pelt. It was not built with a cafeteria, students ate lunch in their classrooms. We converted one of those classrooms in the last three years or so into a cafeteria. They recommend that that be used for classroom space and build a cafeteria. So anyway, that was that plan. The other plan that they mentioned was to build a 630-student school on the property at Stonewall Jackson. Don't change anything while you're there, when you're done with that, demolish the Stonewall Jackson building as it currently is, and so you would have a completely new school. The first option that I mentioned would cost about $15 million by their estimate, this was not estimates that we provided. The second option was $18 million. Keep in mind that that annual payment on the most affordable plan would be just over a million dollars annually. The problem with that is that in that model, we don't realize the same amount of savings as we do in a primary and intermediate, so there would be an additional appropriation that would have to be, we only realized about $400,000 of savings in that model. One of the issue, there were two other issues that concerned us about that recommendation, and that is, you know, Euclid Avenue is not a great location to have a school of 230 students, much less a school of 630 students. There has been a fatality on that road in the last 10 or 15 years, and, you know, if you've been through there at school drop-off time or school pickup time, it certainly is a concern. And we're thankful to the extra help that the city police provide to try to keep that traffic as safe as we possibly can. The other thing is that that is the only place that we have a junior and senior league baseball field, and that plan would, you would lose that. There's tennis courts there as well, but the tennis courts are not used very often.
So the 15 million, the 18 million on those options, so the 15 million was to add 25,000 square feet to Stonewall?
Yeah, and I'm rounding those.
Roughly, right.
Yes, sir.
And then the 18 million was to do that plus the cafeteria at Van Pelt, is that what I understood?
Well, the 18 million was to build a brand-new school there.
A brand-new school?
Yeah, not just renovate the existing building, so there was two.
So which option had the cafeteria?
Both, yeah, they both had.
Both of them, yeah, okay.
And their estimate for building a new cafeteria was about $750,000. Please, I mean, Tammy can give you those exact numbers, she has all the documents, I'm sharing that with you from memory.
And as a former student of Van Pelt, when there was no cafeteria, I dropped many a plate of food on the carpet in the halls there, so I know you all have a cafeteria now, and I'm sure it's much more sanitary than.
It's much more sanitary. It's also pretty loud, too. You know, those low ceilings weren't meant to be a cafeteria, so it certainly has some issues.
So the state board that was here that made those comments or recommendations, they looked at all the sites, right?
It wasn't the state board, it was the department, the Department of Education.
Department of Education.
Yeah, and they toured, they toured all those sites and reviewed all facility documents that we had. Actually, in 1997, the same facility crew were here because that was, you know, the time when school divisions and localities were really working hard to get into ADA compliance. At that time in 1997, they recommended that Highland View and Washington Lee be closed because of the exorbitant cost it would take to renovate those schools. They made the same recommendation again this past spring.
So why did they make the recommendation of the Stonewall expansion and the new school versus the consolidated school at Van Pelt?
They also made that recommendation. Their first recommendation was the Van Pelt plan. They made four or five recommendations, which are part, you can find that.
So their number-one recommendation was this plan?
I don't know that they ranked them, but it was, the one that was listed with the one in front of it was the Van Pelt plan, but I wouldn't even begin to say that they ranked those recommendations. They offered four or five recommendations as part of the, as part of their report with estimates of, you know, renovations and, you know, the whole nine yards. It's a comprehensive report of about, how many pages, Ms. Jones?
So I have a question. I know I've been a thorn in your side for a year now.
All part of the process.
So I wanted to ask a question about a little bit of terminology that I have seen used, and I saw it even recently as today in today's paper, and you used the term that said, "As it is now, our elementary schools, we're in violation of federal law."
Correct.
What does that mean exactly?
So, and I'll get the year wrong, so I won't use it, but in the 90s, the American with Disabilities Act has been changed and modified and improved over the years. We are out of compliance with the requirements of that act for accessibility to restrooms, classrooms, the building itself, parking, any number of items, but those are also, many of those are listed in the multitude of reports that we've done over the last couple of years.
Are there any further potential ramifications? Like, do we know about other school systems that possibly were in the same situation as us, and what happened?
Yeah, sure, it's been brought to my attention, I'm not, I wasn't part of this, but another school division in the Commonwealth, Prince William County, had several issues at many of their schools, just like we do. The Office of Civil Rights got involved with that, and they gave them one summer to complete all necessary renovations to get the schools into full compliance. And it's also my understanding that for any of those issues or items that were not completed, there was a monetary fine for every day that they weren't completed after that time. Keep in mind, ADA is not just about restrooms and elevators, it's also about doorways, size of doorways and doorknobs. I was trying to see if there's, yeah, so that doorknob on that door is not handicap-accessible. There is a push option on it, but if you have to turn a doorknob, it doesn't meet the requirements for accessibility. And so, you know, not just at those three schools, we have, we still have some accessibility issues even at Virginia Middle and Virginia High School, which have been renovated. They're not as, you know, as detailed as the ones at our three oldest elementary schools, but it's certainly, we also, part of the report the Department of Ed brought forth also recommended that, you know, we start beginning to take care of the Virginia Middle and Virginia High School accessibility issues, which are not nearly as detailed as the three elementaries. So there are potential ramifications. I'm certainly not calling the Office of Civil Rights and inviting them down, but, I mean, I don't know what triggers that, but I certainly won't be the one that does it.
So the monies we approved to do the security vestibule work in the bathrooms is being applied to start correcting those issues, right?
Right. Well, part of it, but it doesn't even.
I said, starting to be applied to correct issues. I didn't say it was completely, but we've, we've let, we've approved to let money go, right, to start the renovation work of the bathrooms, to start making those compliant. So it's not like we're not doing any action, right? So I don't want to get people to get the impression we've done nothing, we recognize we've got to do something.
Sure.
So we let that money go, we need to let more money go, right? So that needs to continue moving, which it is, right?
Right. We, the boys restroom at Highland View is complete, and the girls restroom at Highland View should be complete by the end of the week.
Okay. And then ramps, elevators, that?
No, that's not, the money that was released is only for one male and one female restroom at those three schools and a security vestibule, a security vestibule at those three. That's all that that money is set aside for, nothing about accessibility to any other parts of the building.
Okay, so that's additional money we'd need to release.
Significant additional money.
Right, to do that.
So since we're on the subject of accessibility, wasn't there something in the news recently about a student, a child who, I can't remember if she maybe broke her leg or something, and she had to, she went to a different school?
Yeah, so we had a student at one of the three schools that our school board has recommended consolidating, broke their leg, that classroom is on the second floor, the cafeteria is on the basement floor. The only floor that that child could get access to was the main floor, so that child could access the library and the gym, but nothing else. And so we had to transfer that child, who was a fifth grader, to Van Pelt. So rather than finish, you know, at the school that that child attended, we actually had to transfer to Van Pelt. Now, I think we're in the process of transferring that child back, but again, that's certainly not an ideal situation for families.
So you had mentioned the money that we had released for security and safety had been just for the bathrooms, just for the security vestibules?
Yeah, just for one male and one female. We have multiple restrooms at each of the buildings.
So you're about to wrap up at Highland View. Which school are you gonna go to next?
So the plan will, next at Highland View, we'll do the security vestibule, which there's an early December anticipation date for that to be complete. The steel has been ordered, the glass has been ordered, we're just waiting for that to come in to begin that. The next school we would go to would be Washington Lee, do restrooms there first, then the vestibule. Following that, our plan would be to go to Stonewall Jackson, begin with restrooms, and depending on the timing, and depending on the decision of this council, the vestibule at Stonewall Jackson would be last, and here's the reason why. You probably read in the paper that Van Pelt received an $83,000 security grant from the state, and that's what we did the vestibule at Van Pelt with. You could not apply, can't even apply for that grant if there's potential that a school will be closed within the next five years. And so if we, if a decision is made to keep Stonewall Jackson open for the next five years, we would apply for that safety grant for the vestibule there, so we could pay for that with state money rather than paying for that with local money. So there is a method to the madness, or there's a reason that we've chosen the order that we've chosen.
And you had mentioned that if we did a full And you had mentioned that if we did a full, say, ADA upgrade to a school to make everything fully accessible, it'd be a significant increase in money. So what kind of, remind us again what kind of money we're looking at?
So, there have been three estimates for renovations that I think have caused some confusion for folks. Initially, when we first started talking about this process, we were talking about renovating the schools to make them twenty-first century learning centers. The total for that was forty-two million dollars total. Then, the next estimate that you received was from Thompson and Litten, who came in and actually did a site survey of each of those schools and said you have to do this, 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 and this. And that total was about fourteen million for all of the, for all those three schools. I think the total was about one-point-six million dollars for Stonewall Jackson alone. Washington Lee was the most expensive, you know, if you're familiar with the layout there, it has four levels, and it would take two elevators to be able to access all those levels because of the way that it was built, and that's the reason for the additional expense there. And then there's a third estimate that was provided by the Virginia Department of Education that was not site-specific, but they use statewide averages for renovations that have been done over the last several years all across the Commonwealth. And so, for example, and I'll get this number wrong, but it's good for conversational purposes, for example, if you're just doing ADA renovations, I think they figure fifty dollars a square foot. And so their estimates were more, they're in between those two that I just mentioned. But the...
Wasn't it something like eight, eight something, if I recall?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was much more expensive at Stonewall Jackson, and Tammy can probably look that number up while we're continuing to talk.
Going back, you were just talking about what you've done since we started talking back in the spring. Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you also get community development block grant funds for Stonewall?
Yeah, so we are in the process of completing, we have been approved that grant, we had the estimates, we're waiting on the folks who provided the quotes to, tell me again, the something bacon?
Davis Bacon Wage.
The Davis Bacon Wage Guarantee, after we have that information. The, one of the quotes that we have was higher than our original estimate, two of those were lower. We have recommended we go with the middle estimate, it's a company that we work with regularly, and so as soon as all the red tape that typically goes along with state and federal grants gets, goes through, we will replace the elevator at Stonewall Jackson.
This school year?
I would anticipate, even before Christmas, but again, red tape is red tape. So it's out of our, it's out of our hands.
I said "school year," not "calendar year," but...
Yeah, there you go.
So, another question for you. We've talked about accessibility and safety. I'd like to talk a little bit about staff and teachers. And, again, this isn't really up to us, this is more up to you and your staff and the school board, but about teachers in general, you know, my mom was a teacher, my wife's a teacher, my sister teaches, so, kinda is an important topic, especially to me with family, so. You came in here tonight to talk about the Van Pelt plan specifically, and we see on the charts around the room. And I know we've talked about this before, but how many grade-level teachers would be getting a pink slip? Would we be telling, "We're laying you off"?
Right. So, first of all, let me say that regardless of the plans that we've looked at, anytime that we've put a plan together with a savings plan, keep in mind, over seventy-five percent of our budget is in personnel. And so any savings we can generate, for the most part, is going to be in personnel. So whether you're talking about building at Van Pelt, or you're talking about building at Washington Lee, personnel is going to be involved in that savings equation. At Van Pelt, grade-level teachers, I would not anticipate any grade-level teacher receiving a pink slip, I would anticipate that it would be absorbed through attrition or transfers. Actually, our goal, I think, as a board, would be that no employee lost their job as a result of that. However, there are some very specific, for example, we have one school counselor at every school, we have one nurse, or a portion of one nurse at every school. And so there would be potential in those very specified positions, media specialists or librarians, as you probably know them as, there is that potential that one of those folks would, would receive a pink slip. However, our school board has worked with our education association, we have a very detailed process to follow, that had a lot of input from our BVA, that would take us through the process of what that would look like. Again, let me reemphasize that our board's goal in that situation would be to save every single job and to absorb it through attrition and transfers.
Yeah, so that'd be your goal, and I understand that, but you know, you really can't control that, you know, there, you know, once you get there, you're there, so either the teachers or whoever decides to retire or they don't, but at the end of the day, you're going to have fewer teachers and fewer administrative staff, right? Because that's, part of this plan is, that's how you're going to pay for that, including the operational cost savings, right? So it'll be a reduction.
Absolutely.
So, of all the staffing of teachers we've got in the school system, there'd be how many fewer teachers with this plan?
I think that the total number of teachers, and Ms. Jones can get that, is, the total number of teachers is nine teachers. I think the total number of grade-level teachers is six grade-level teachers. Is that right? Yeah, that is correct. I would tell you too, Mr. Mumpire, I know this is something...
So say that again, nine teachers total?
One teacher per grade level, those are the grade-level teachers. Right, we can tell you specifically what those divisions are.
So that's six, right? One per grade?
And while she's looking that up, I'll tell you...
Is that six or seven? Do you include K in that? What do you include in the grade level?
Kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. Pre-K I do not, I don't anticipate.
I don't have the one grade level.
Yeah.
So it'd be six.
Right. I will tell you that currently, we're operating very inefficiently because we have class sizes of eleven and twelve in some schools, and class sizes of twenty-four in other schools. And so really, not only will this be an operational and personnel savings, but it will make us run more efficiently and provide equity across classrooms. You can imagine the benefit of a class size of eleven, but you can also imagine the struggles that a class size of twenty-four would have as well.
So if you had to take a ballpark, how many teachers do you employ in the system right now that are within five years of retirement or eligible for retirement?
I do not know the number off the top of my head, but we can, we can provide that information for you pretty quickly. Every year when we go through the budget process, that's one of the things that we look at, we look at, you know, how many teachers we have, zero through five, every five-year step in between and at the end as well. So that's always part of what we think about as we're developing a budget, but it's not information I have really...
I know, personally, I've talked to a couple school system employees, I'll say it that way to not single them out, that said they're hanging on, you know, until they see if this school comes, then they're ready to, you know, cash it in and head to Florida or something, you know, so. I think there are certainly teachers out there and employees out there who are looking for retirement, you know, whenever, whenever they know, have some more certainty on what's going to happen with, you know, with their students.
That was actually a question, what you brought up, was something I was going to touch on next. Do we know, when we know roughly how many per year are leaving through retirement, or maybe moving away, and how many are hired in the summertime on a normal average year?
Right. Our typical new teacher orientation, which includes not just brand-new teachers, but new teachers to our division, on average, over the last several years, has been about twenty teachers.
So really, this even with, even if no one retires, theoretically, you could fix this with attrition?
Right, and now that attrition includes retirees.
Oh, okay.
Folks that just get out of the business, folks that go to other school divisions. But twenty teachers, you know, some years it's twenty-two, some years it's eighteen, but it's always right around that number. I shouldn't say always. In the last five years, that's what it's been, we've tracked those numbers.
Okay, the other question I got, this Van Pelt Consolidated and PPA plan, this is the exact same plan we voted on before, there's nothing really different, correct?
Correct.
Financially, anything? So, what are the other costs that we have talked about? Do you have any numbers on the other infrastructure costs that would typically go with this school that the city has to understand, like the roads and the expansion of the roads and the traffic flow in and out and all that? Do you know that?
I would defer to Mr. Reeves for that question.
Counsel, I think it was last week, the school board approved the plan a second time, is it?
Last Monday, yes, last Monday, yes.
Yeah, so we met on Tuesday or Wednesday with Dr. Perrigen, Wallace, and his engineer, and several other individuals that are necessary to make those determinations. They are looking at, at least right now, what we know we would have to have on Suncrest, if you were going towards where the school entrance would be, you would need a left-turn-in lane heading west on Suncrest. You would also need a right-off lane on heading back east on Suncrest, where you're turning right into the school. And then if you go to Suncrest and Bonham Road, you would need a right-hand turn lane there. We already have a right-hand turn lane from Suncrest on the Bonham, then you would, we already have a right-hand turn lane from Bonham onto Suncrest. There's a potential for the need of a traffic signal, however, based on the traffic studies that we've done and based on the anticipated volume from what the car traffic is at other schools, it still does not meet the federal standards to have a traffic signal, but to be on the safe side, we're going to go ahead and get an estimate for a traffic signal. We're going to take it another step as well, because if you have a traffic signal there, it will potentially cause a backup at the intersection of Bonham and Linden Drive, so we are looking to see what it would cost to potentially put in two roundabouts, one at Bonham and Suncrest, another at Bonham and Linden, and that way, traffic continually flows throughout that entire road there. We've had that discussion, I've advised Mr. McCullough that we need that back by November the twenty-fifth, and they're working on the designs and the potential cost for that right now. We are also trying to determine through VDOT if any of those projects could be VDOT-funded as well.
I would add to Mr. Reeves' comments, and I also think there's another misconception that the city would have to pay for a road from Suncrest to the school, which you can see is demonstrated here, that road is part of Street's proposal.
I'll also add, I don't know if we'll be able to do this by November the twenty-fifth, but...
What does he mean by the "Street Proposal"? I didn't, I didn't connect.
JA Street, I'm sorry.
Oh, the JA Street Proposal.
Sorry, I apologize.
This is Grandview Drive, now this is just me thinking off the top of my head. You have several homes along here, we anticipate potentially increased traffic because traffic would come up Grandview and over the turn left into Van Pelt. It would be expensive, I'll go ahead and say that right now, but there is a stretch on Jonesboro Road in Russell Tennessee, where there's an island between Jonesboro Road and several homes along that stretch there, and what would the cost be to add a road from Suncrest to separate Grandview Drive from any school traffic that would run from Suncrest up to, what is it, Terry, uh...
Spring Hill Terrace.
Spring Hill Terrace, that would be strictly for school traffic only. I'm saying right now, it's going to be expensive.
I didn't ask for that, by the way.
He didn't ask for that, I'm just throwing out every option in order to try to have all our bases covered, mainly because you will have more increased traffic here, and we want to try to be good neighbors to these homes here, and that would prevent them from having to deal with school traffic on a daily basis by having a buffer something there.
So the bottom line is, there are some additional costs, we've got to get our arms around on the street infrastructure that's got to be in place, right? Any other, any other costs that we know about as far as power, sewer, water, anything else that's got to be done to have this project sustainable?
That, the plan, the JA Street plan includes those costs.
Does this plan, does this...
Let me, one other thing, though...
Well, it wouldn't include any feeders up to the property, I'm sure they're not going to pay for, you know, if the water sewer lines aren't sized right to handle that additional load.
I think they've verified that they are.
They have, and power, too?
Yes, sir. The other thing that I would add...
So no other costs, so right now, we're sitting here, no other costs that we're talking about, other than the roads?
No, there are some other costs, too. There are some benefits as well, you do gain properties that you could sell potentially in those other, those other three properties of the schools that we consolidate. One of the questions that you had last time we discussed this is what would it cost to DMO Highland View, that's about a hundred-and-forty-nine thou, a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, we have an estimate for that. So there are some additional costs, obviously, for any plan, whether you're building the home or building the school, that, I don't, again, I've worked with Mr. Reeves and Wallace, and I think we're trying to identify those and come up with them, and before, I think that the plan would be, Mr. Reeves, if I'm right, to have that information for you before you took any additional action on this suggested.
So you think we'll be able to roll all those costs up by the twenty-fifth of November, or be after that?
I think we can have probably ninety percent of it.
Because you've got roads, but he's got, he's got demolition costs, anything there?
Your demolition costs at Highland View is a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, I think we're going to, or if they may, already reached out the TAF and Fry in regards to Washington and Lee as well, but I would anticipate it would probably be in the ballpark of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand as well.
Yeah, they're both about the same size.
Mr. McCullough, you got any idea of best case, worst case on the road changes that they're talking about?
I think it would be best to let them go ahead and draw up that plan before we throw any numbers out tonight, I mean, it'd be too wide.
Does this plan, I remember a few months ago when you spoke to us, we were talking about solar panels on schools, does this plan roll that in there, or is this not included?
It does not, I do have a meeting later in the month with a solar company, and there are some potential additional savings for adding solar, not just at this site, but to all the properties that we have. And we, that, that meeting is scheduled later this month.
I'd like to see that, too, because, you know, it is beneficial, and if you can find savings anywhere, that's, that's good, especially when you're taking on some unknowns.
Absolutely.
What about traffic flow through the neighborhoods? What's the, what's the plan on Village Green and Spring Lake, and what do those folks that live there need to know about the traffic flow on this project?
Well, I can't anticipate every resident, every student or parent, which path, there's multiple paths to get to Van Pelt property, you can come Heritage, you can come Suncrest, you can come Spring Lakes, there's multiple ways to come in. I think that we could fairly say that there is going to be an increase in traffic, you know, probably two and a half times, it'll be twice a day, for the most part. We did a street study, a road, a traffic count study last year, and according to the folks here at the city, it would not, it would not be, we wouldn't be unable to handle it, and it would also not require any additional speed humps or anything like that to make it work. Obviously, there, after you go from having four-hundred-and-fifty kids on a thirty-three-acre property to having eleven-hundred kids on an eleven, on a thirty-three-acre property, things are going to be different, and we'll probably have to make changes even after we get started, there, we won't be able to develop a perfect plan, but I think we're all dedicated to doing what's best for our kids and making sure that we take into consideration the neighborhood it affects as well.
Well, I think that needs to be communicated, because I know, I know all the people that live, you know, East Valley Drive, in that area of Majesty Heights and Metacres and all, if we have, if we have to go on that end of town, we don't go up on Old Avenue Highway and get on the highway, that's not the way we go. We go up Beaver View, we cut through Spring Lake, and that's, you know, that's kind of the way we get there, because it's kind of a shortcut. So a lot of people use that.
Sure.
So if we're going to increase that by a couple hundred people a day, you know, we kind of need to know that, right? People need to understand what that traffic flow is going to look like, because that could cause, I mean, Beaver View's not a big road either, right? Going up the railroad tracks into Spring Lake, that's a, that's a narrow, and then you've got to wind around where the condos are, and that's, that could become a problem.
Absolutely.
You've got that whole end of town trying to get half the people up through that road set, right?
Absolutely. You know, Bonham Road will have increased traffic, Heritage Drive will have increased traffic, Suncrest will have, I mean, every road, there's multiple ways to get in there, and all those roads will absolutely, without question, have increased traffic, no doubt.
So I'm concerned if we just put the Sunset Roads in, Mr. Reeves, you know, are we, are we overlooking the fact that we're actually, after we get going, we're looking at an expansion of the road through Beaver View or something that we're not anticipating, right, to really alleviate the traffic flow?
Well, as Dr. Perrigen stated, we did do traffic counts last year, and based on the traffic count, I can't remember the number of vehicles, it's additional, maybe four-hundred vehicles, I think, were anticipated in the area through Spring Lake or Bonham Road, that entire area, and even based on those additional amount of vehicles, it still does not meet any federal standards that would require road expansions or additional signal lights or anything additional as far as speed or safety.
We have, we've also done car counts that are queued up in each of our elementary schools for afternoon pickup, and so we know what those numbers are. This year and last year, there's, if you look at all four elementary schools, on the days that we've counted, there's been a difference of no more than twenty, so that's a pretty consistent number, so we know, I mean, we don't know how many people will decide to be a car rider if they're, you know, living in the west end of town and coming to that side, but we do have a good idea, we think we can handle that amount of car rider traffic. We have eleven-hundred students, five-hundred of those students ride a bus, the other seven-hundred, either, most of them are car riders or they walk. And a big, and a large portion of that is at Van Pelt, a good portion of our car riders are already at Van Pelt.
Well, I'm anticipating a big traffic problem, I can already see it brewing, I'm just, I can just see it.
Yeah.
I mean, we're sitting here with a new manufacturing plant coming online on Old Avenue Highway, which we're not even taking into that traffic count. Now, we're going to add a bunch of students and parents moving up Old Avenue Highway. We're going to have the biggest congestion there, Black Wolf, and trying to get on Beaver View that you've ever seen in your life. I mean, it's just, it's going to be a mess. I can just see it. So we need, we need to be thinking that way.
Good point.
The sketch you brought that I know we can see, but folks out there can't see, but the road, we talked about the, the new proposed road going up, and then there, the other road over on Grandview, would one of those be, how would it work with buses and car riders? Would one be for buses and one be for car riders, or how?
So, yes. So this, this road, this road here would be for car or bus pickup, and then this road all the way here with an extension that goes out here to cul-de-sacs would come back around. And then whichever one of those is a bus lane, we would, when the, we would have the elementary school dispensing at the same time. All the buses would leave at the same time, and as soon as those buses were gone, then you would end up having two car lanes. And that's different than how we currently now, all buses leave from the middle school. And so our, our elementary students leave later in the day. We, that would also bring some issues that we'd have to deal with too, because some of our elementary students depend on their middle school or high school brother or sister to get them off the bus, and so we would have to come up with a way to deal with those situations. It's not unsolvable, but it's certainly an issue that would, would be, we'd have to deal with. Now, I will tell you, I do believe that elementary school teachers would love that, because all the, I mean, you're not sitting there waiting on buses to get there. You don't have the bus, afternoon bus duty. All students would be on those buses and gone at the end of the afternoon, which, you know, if you ask the middle and high school teachers, that's definitely a perk.
So, let me understand what you just said, because, so the buses would do, they would leave, be at the elementary school before the middle and the high school?
Right. We would, we would, in, in our opinion, in order to make the transportation work with the traffic issues that Mr. Mumpower mentioned, we would have to flip-flop the start times. You know, right now, our middle and high schools start early, and our elementary school starts a little bit later. The same is true in the afternoon. The middle and high school gets out early, and the elementary school gets out a little bit later. We would have to make adjustments to that to make this plan work. However, research is very clear that younger students should start earlier and, and older adolescents should start later if you want to, if you want students to have the best learning environment possible. So it really, it makes, it makes sense to do that anyway. This would just be another reason to move in that direction.
I, I know that's something y'all are considering.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're working on that on a kind of sidebar.
But, but it wouldn't be like it is now where you can, if you don't, you have the cars and then the bus, when the buses get there, if you're usually, if you're lucky and you're already in line, you can get through, but when the buses get there, it backs the cars up. What do you remain, which is usually me?
Yeah, right.
A considerable amount.
Yeah, you know, that, this year, you talk about it Highland View.
Yes, I am.
Well, we only have one lane total at Highland View, which is part of what that problem is. You know, really, according to state, the state recommendations, you should have a separate car rider lane and a separate bus lane. That's one of the issues that we have at our elementary schools currently, and this is, you know, this would solve that issue, because we, we would have separate lanes, but then we would end up having multiple car rider lanes after the buses exited.
So is that what you mean, in this little survey we were given by CMA, is what you mean by changing our start times?
That was, that's a separate issue.
It's a separate.
While, while we were doing a survey, that little survey, we were, we were also trying to get additional information about changing our start times, because that's a completely different conversation that our school board has been having.
So give us if they, if the start times do flip, what are we talking about? Elementary would start about when, and then middle and high school when?
I, I would not recommend that our elementary schools start, again, this is a school board decision. It's not a Keith Perigent decision. I would not ever recommend that our elementary schools start before 8 o'clock. I would assume we'd be closer to 8:15 start time there and closer to 8:35 start time at the middle and high school, where we currently start at the high school about 7:45. Now, again, those are rough estimates. I mean, those are things that we would have to work out, you know, car, I mean, how we deal with car riders and, and get that traffic through there, what time we start school. All of that is future decisions. I just, you know, in my opinion, we would have to make changes to those to make this plan work.
Do we have any more questions for Superintendent?
Yeah, I had some on the survey. So this, this survey, I think, was what was quoted in the paper. There were some numbers quoted.
Yes, sir.
You know, about how, so can you explain the, the numbers a little bit for everybody so we know how the survey was done and who was involved, and, you know, how you came up with the numbers that were in the paper?
Right. So we, we put out a survey. Our, our school board likes to get as much public input as we possibly can. So we put out a survey. We sent it out to our teacher listserv. We put it on our social media. We also sent it out to our parent listserv. And we actually had for, for cert, as you compare surveys that we've done in the past, we had really good response. We had over 350 folks respond, and there are any different categories. We also tried to get community member response as well. So we had, you know, about 50 students. I forget the total number of teachers and staff members. We had a good number of parents who responded and a small number of community members that responded. And we didn't want to just look at it as a whole. That doesn't really tell the whole story, so we tried to disaggregate the data a little bit and look at the folks that it actually impacts. So we, the information that we presented, we had more information, but we thought this was the pertinent information. We looked at it as teachers as a whole and provided that data. Then we looked at it as elementary teachers only. And then we took it down even deeper and said, and when I say teachers, I'm talking about all employees. It could be a cafeteria worker, it could be a teacher, it could be a principal, but employees, I should say. And then we broke it down to the three schools that potentially could be closed and looked at that data. And, you know, out of the number of surveys that we had, which again, is, is not scientifically relevant for reliability or validity, it is certainly more input than we've had at any other point in this process as we've talked about building a new school. So I think it is good data to look at, even though if we were doing a research study, there wouldn't be the numbers that we would need to, to prove a scientific fact. However, what, what we saw from the, the 352 folks that responded to the survey is that more folks than not thought that the Van Pelt plan was the best idea. The second highest rated plan was to renovate Stonewall Jackson, demolish Highland View and Washington Lee and build a 430-student school on that, on the Washington Lee site. And the number, the third ranked plan was to demolish all three of those schools and build a 630-student school at Washington Lee, which would require the purchase of Lee Garden Apartments. So then we took it another step and controlled for, okay, this, you know, that was a distant third, so we looked at the second choices of everybody that made that third option their first choice. And even whenever you move those over, there's about 75 of those, 40 of those people, their next option, their next favorite plan was the Washington Lee site, and 37 of those folks, their next favorite option was the Van Pelt site. So even when you control for that, Van Pelt ended up having more positive support than the Washington Lee site. Now, I will tell you, in full disclosure, my recommendation to our school board was the Washington Lee site. I think that both plans are really good, and I think both are good for the future. I think that Van Pelt plan is better for now, even though Washington Lee site is good for now too, but I think the Washington Lee site is better for the future, even though I still, I do believe that Van Pelt is still good for the future. But obviously, because of the financial constraints that our city has, and what we also know is that Virginia Middle School, we have a five-year capital improvement plan. Virginia Middle School and Virginia High School have some very significant issues that we are going to have to address, and so if we ask for additional funding from City Council now, or additional money from taxpayers now, we know that there's going to be an additional ask in the future, because Virginia Middle and Virginia High School have very serious needs in regards to roofs, in regards to HVAC units, in some very hot, and on top of that, the ADA issues that we have at those schools. So I think, I shouldn't speak for the, the members of our board who voted as Van Pelt is the top site, but I, I do believe the overarching reason they voted for that is because they do believe it's a good plan, and they want to make sure that we aren't asking for additional funding now, because we know in the future we'll be asking for additional funding to increase teacher pay and to deal with facility issues at Virginia Middle and Virginia High School.
So you, you touched on something important there, especially with the funding. At the end of the day, we're the, we're the funding body. We're the appropriating body. So, so the, the location of the school is not, is not a decision that Neil Osborne or Bill Hartley or anybody else up here is going to make. It's a decision that the school board is going to make. So, so it really comes to us, does this funding work? Does this funding mechanism work? This doesn't cost any additional money. We aren't asking for any kind of tax increase. We aren't asking for anything like that. And I think that's an important aspect to point out in this, because there's been, you know, some misinformation, some, some fear, some concern that this is going to cost some kind of additional tax increase, and that's not the case with this specific plan. That, you know, like you said, the Washington Lee plan is very good. It could cost some more money down the road, and especially with the other capital items you mentioned at Virginia Middle School and Virginia High School, it's important to keep, you know, as little money now as possible going to you, because you'll probably need some more later on down the road. So, so I appreciate, if you, if you look at a lot of other localities, school boards don't tend to be good stewards of tax money, you know, just, just to be honest with you. So I appreciate that you're trying to be, or that your school board is trying to be reasonable with, you know, with what they're asking for. They're not coming asking for an additional million-dollar appropriation to build something.
I, I think that's important to our board as well. We certainly could have provided other plans that did that on other sites and other parts of the city, but we, I, our school board, I believe, truly cares about the financial situation of the city. They also care about our kids. They want to make sure that every student in Bristol has access to an equitable learning environment and that we do so in a manner that doesn't cause an increase in taxpayer dollars, because as we've both said, I mean, there, there are some significant facility issues that are right around the corner at Virginia Middle School and Virginia High School. And, and Van Pelt is 45 years old. I mean, we're doing some renovations there too, but Van Pelt's not a young pub.
One thing that, I know, I've been asked this, but also, I think you addressed this last year, but talking about, you know, talking, when you talked about the future, it made me think about that, about the ability of this school to deal, you know, typically, I think that we've been steady, maybe slightly, a little up, a few years, a little down, but, you know, should things change in Bristol and you get this influx of population and you only have two school sites, how would you deal, should the population go up in five, 10 years from now, if you, if you did this, how would you deal with that, being that all your elementary students are at one location?
So let me first answer a question you didn't ask and say that if we want our population to grow in the city of Bristol, we've got to do something about homes for families to come and move into. I think we have a huge neighborhood issue in the city of Bristol. We really don't have adequate housing for our families. So if this casino does come in, I mean, my, again, I don't, anyway, I, I don't know that there's places for families to live and move into in the city of Bristol. So I think that's the first challenge that we have. But secondly, at Van Pelt, there's 33 acres that the city owns there. The site, the, the design is made in a way that you can easily add on to at the end of the buildings so that you can add additional space there. The, the, even at the, what would become the primary school, there's additional space there. There's even plans that have been drawn over the years to expand that existing footprint. And so this plan, and actually the Washington Lee plan too, if you purchase the Lee Garden Apartments, had the potential to expand if you, if you needed to do so. However, if you look at Highland View and you look at the neighbors that are there, you have a cemetery on one side and, and homes on the other. There's really no way to expand at Highland View, and Stonewall Jackson is also very, very landlocked as well.
Okay, I got one other comment back to the survey, okay?
Yes, sir.
So I want to make sure the whole story's told, because there's a lot, a lot of data here.
For sure.
So the Washington Lee, Highland View, and Stonewall Jackson parents, so you backed out all the other parents, all the other teacher staff, so it's just Washington Lee?
Well, let me clarify that.
Hang on. I'm just re, I'm just going to read the numbers.
Right. There could be a high school parent that has a child at both the high school and one of those elementary schools.
Okay, it says at the top, Washington Lee, Highland View, Stonewall Jackson, parent results. That's what the title says. I'm just reading it, right?
Yeah, that, and that is true.
So Van Pelt came in third.
Right.
And Washington Lee Three Elementary School was overwhelmingly the number one vote, right?
Yeah.
Two to one.
I pointed that out last week.
Okay, two to one. Just make sure everybody understands that. Then when you look at elementary parents, so those are the parents, right? Those are the customers, right? Voice of the customer, the parents. Okay, the elementary parents, right, very close. 22 for Washington Lee, right, 24 for Van Pelt. Nothing overwhelming about that.
Correct.
50-50 split, right? So, and then when you look at the teachers, the next most important, the teachers at the schools affected, Washington Lee, Highland View, Stonewall, 21 votes for the Washington Lee Three, Three School Model, only 14 for Van Pelt. Quite a bit different. So the teachers at the schools affected and the staff and the parents overwhelmingly put Van Pelt number three, right, and then Washington Lee. So that needs to be, but the paper didn't read that way, right? So the, the paper read, which overwhelmingly 164, whatever, but when you really back out the other numbers, there's another story here, right?
I don't write the newspaper articles.
I'm just saying, but a lot of people do. A lot of people read that, right?
I, I think he does a really good job, but I, I...
The point is this, the parents, the parents of the kids at the schools affected by a major majority do not like the Van Pelt based on this survey.
Not a major majority.
Two to one, okay? Two to one, right? So we, we are just council and board members, right? We're not affected. I'm not directly affected. People affected are the parents of these kids and the teachers in those schools. That's who's really going to be directly affected by this decision. So I just bring that up so that we all, in a humble manner, which we were, we were told here earlier, be very humble. Put yourself in their shoes, right? Walk the mile that they're going to have to walk when this decision's made. It's the most important decision the city has made in a number of years. So just put your egos in your pocket, put your prides aside, understand we've got a problem, but listen to the parents and the teachers affected, because they're the ones that's going to have to live with this decision. And so when you see that, it begs the question, why, if it's such a great plan, why are they not completely on board with it, right? Maybe the, maybe the survey was flawed, maybe it needs to be done over again. A lot of times, the way these are done can influence and bias the results, right? I've done a number of surveys, years and years, and I know, you can write it one way and get completely different results. So let's, let's take the first survey and maybe dig a little deeper, because it's telling us something's there that we need to understand before we do something that we can't back out of, okay? That's all I'm saying.
Well, I just think you said one thing that's not correct. You said it, when you look at just elementary parents, that it was overwhelming. It wasn't. It was actually very even.
I read the numbers. Let me read them again. I want to make sure I'm clear. I don't want to be misinterpreted. So let me read. The first thing I said was Washington Lee, Highland View, Stonewall, this sheet right here, right?
Yeah, right. That's not what you said earlier there.
Washington Lee Three Elementary School Model got 13 votes, Van Pelt only got seven.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's what that sheet said. That's all I'm saying. And that's parents affected by the three schools we're talking about, right? Very important number, right?
I would also say that the Van Pelt parents are affected by this too, because their kids are in the classes that have 24 kids in it, Mr. Mumpower.
But not like those kids, not like the parents of these kids.
Yeah, actually, have you been to Van Pelt lately? It certainly does have those kids.
Yeah, and I've talked to a lot of, I've talked to a lot of parents in the Highland View communities too, right? And they, they got, there's a lot of impact there.
If you think we don't have trauma at Van Pelt, you are sadly mistaken.
I didn't say that, Mr. Perigent. That's not what I said. I understand they're going to be impacted. I'm saying the Highland View parents are going to be directly impacted. Humble yourself, put your ego in your pocket, and understand that. Listen to what they're going to have to deal with. It's important. They're concerned.
Right now, they're dealing with asbestos, bad air quality, water, mold, and mildew. I'm, I'm certainly thinking about what they're dealing with.
Do more surveys then. Let's see what they think. Let's get them all in here. Let's talk to them. It's important.
So one, two more questions for you real quick, and going back to, you know, and I know I've said this before about how, you know, we are two different bodies, the council and the school board, and we have different objectives. We have different things that we vote on. And I've said before, you know, publicly, that this is such a complicated issue that we do have to work together on it. But now going back to, yeah, I think, I think we're right in saying that there are, you know, definitely different roles that we have. So I'd like to know about, you know, what the school board says about this, because I really think this is more of a school board matter. But going back to the financial discussion about, you mentioned that 1.3 million was in that agreement, that it cannot exceed that payment. Is that a fixed interest rate or a variable interest rate?
It will be fixed once it's set. When we, when we present, that's one of the things that's different between now and last November. The estimated rate at this time last year was 4.74... The estimated rate at this time last year was 4.74, but because interest rates have declined nationally and because the city's bond rating has climbed two notches, the estimated interest rate at this time has went from 4.74 to 3.63 or 5, I, I forget. And since that interest rate was given to us, interest rates have went down again. So, I would anticipate that that interest rate could be even lower.
So, and this is more of a, of a school board decision related to the finances because it's more about your finances, but what if, let's just say, best-case scenario, that agreement cannot exceed 1.3 million, the payment, but with interest rates, the payment's actually 1.1 million. So, what do you think could be done with that extra money? Could it be, you know, more aides in the classrooms for the teachers to have help, an extra person in there? Or could it be, could that money be put away in a capital fund for high school and middle school stuff?
So, we have already estimated the different, what we think the new payment is going to be based on the 3.6 whatever interest rate, and we believe it is going to be about 1.1 million as long as construction costs have not went up significantly over the last year. We won't know that till we, till we get the final numbers. However, if you'll remember, we made this budget neutral last year by getting, taking money from our lottery account, which is the only flexible state account that we have. And so, instead of taking $270,000 from our lottery to make that plan work, under what we anticipate the new interest rate and payment would be, that new number is what, Ms. Jones? Out of our, out of our lottery? It goes from 270 to 100. So, rather than taking state funds and applying it towards that loan, we would have more state funds to apply for other things.
That lottery money could be used for?
It's very flexible. That's the only flexible state funding that we have. Now, in full disclosure, let me tell you this, too. Mr. McGee also wrote another great article about these gaming things that are popping up, and, and lottery proceeds are down. If the casino comes, there's potential that lottery proceeds would, would go down. Lottery monies for schools, we're not supposed to supplant the general fund funding that we receive from the state, however, that's what's happened over the years. And so, if lottery, lottery revenues go down, our appropriation from the state would theoretically go down, too. So, that's something that's, I shouldn't be selling this to y'all, but it's something to be thinking about. One other thing that I think that we also have to think about, too, is that we received our new local composite index for the next biennium, and our local composite index went up by .1. So, currently, we're a .29, it's going to go up to a .30. That could mean an additional $100,000 required effort from the city to, to come to the schools as a result of that change. We don't know any of that for sure, but that's certainly things that we need to take into account. What doesn't change in any of those scenarios is that we are out of compliance with federal law, and we're not providing accessible facilities for our students. And this council, multiple members have said, it's not just a legal issue, but it's also a moral issue. This plan is the best way that we have to deal it and to, to deal with it and to protect our city from having somebody else tell us how to fix it. We control our own destiny.
So, the, the follow-up on Council McFarren's question, I mentioned this to you after the school board presentation, I noticed that, that every other scenario used $270,000 of lottery funds. This one only used, I want to say, 140, seemed to me to be the number. So, there was about 130,000 that you didn't have to use because of, to make, make it work, but it, for some reason, if the cost of goods have gone up because of tariffs and other things, then you could still do that, use those additional lottery funds to make this budget neutral. But if you didn't have to, that would give you additional money for aides or any kind, really anything in the school system since it's not directly tied back to SOQ.
Right, and if you, if you apply that back to the estimated payment for the Stonewall Jackson renovations, which were about 1.6 million, that annual payment was estimated to be about $125,000. So, if there's $140,000 to play with there, you could absorb an additional 1.8 million on the school, or you use that $140,000 for a whole lot of aides or a whole lot of instructional resources, or several computers, or smart boards, or what have. Yeah, absolutely, there's flexibility there. Now, we've, in order to make that happen, we've tightened our belt. The lottery flexibility is something that school divisions have fought for over the years because localities have less and less ability to, to make up the difference of what it costs to fund public education. And so, the more flexibility we have, the, the better off we are. When I told Ms. Jones that we were going to use that flexible lottery money to make this work, she almost had a heart attack. So, flex, that flexible lottery money is how, is really how we make things work in tight budget years. Is that fair to say, Ms. Jones?
That's fair.
So, from a, from a.
Hundred and fifty-three thousand.
So, from a cost standpoint, we've been talking roughly 18, what, .4 million or something like that, right?
18.4, yes, if construction costs hadn't changed.
Yeah, if, assuming construction costs are the same, and over a 30-year time period, right, we're going to, we're going to pay this principal and interest over that time period, and it comes out to be about 30 to 31 million or 32 million.
Down from 37, yeah.
Okay, and that's assuming, what kind of interest rate?
3.63 or 6.5.
3.63, which we thought when we looked at that the first time, that was really low because others had estimated it could be as high as 5 and 1/2 to 6%. Interest rate pressures were going up, right, at the point.
Right.
And our rating has gone up, so interest rates have nudged down a little bit. Our, our rating's going up, right? So, it's anybody's guess, you know, what the rate might be, but at best case, if it's 4% interest, if you, if you assume four, and it's not going to be in the threes, because I can just tell you, I, I would be a betting man that's never going to be in the threes because of the risk associated with this from an investment standpoint. But just say 4%, right? You're going to spend $31 million over 30 years, right? That's what you're going to spend. If it's as high as 5% or 5 and 1/4, which I think potentially it could end up there, then that's 36 million over 30 years. So, you know, you got a $5 million swing just in, you know, that little bit of interest rate movement. So, that's what the city, citizens, and taxpayers would pay out over 30 years, right, in principal and interest, right? Somewhere between 31 and 36 million, right? So, now, if you put $5 million down, right, like we talked about another option, right, and you, and you do the old-fashioned way, and now that payment turns into $22 million over 30 years. So, basically, you've saved in the neighborhood of 10 to 12 million of cash, right, for the city over that same time period. Well, that's significant. I mean, that, that's, that's a significant amount of money, right? Principal and interest in both cash flow scenarios. So, you know where I'm at, right? When you just go do leasing and rent options, you're paying principal and interest, that's the worst cash outlay you could ever have. And so, you're putting the burden of that on this city for 30 years. So, that's what we've got to really humble ourselves, understand that, because that's what we're signing up for in this PPA versus putting some monies down and doing the traditional financing, which lowers that and saves cash over the same time period, right?
I would agree with everything you've said, except for traditional financing, which we don't have the capacity to do. And Mr. Mr. Mumpower, if you want to give us $5 million to put down as a down payment, I would say thank you very much. But that's not my choice, that's not our school board's choice. Our choice is to pick a location and tell you what's best instructional for our kids. Your choices are around the financing part of it, and if you want to put a down payment, and if you want to sign this comprehensive agreement. I can't, you can't make our school board choose a site, no more than they can make you choose the amount of your down payment.
I get that.
So.
So, you mentioned, if we had a check and we want to make all four current schools 21st Century Learning Centers, that's, what, 47 million?
Forty-two, seven, yeah, over 40 million. And, and, and you realize no savings in that. And if you do this, the safe, accessible, and functional renovations, which are about 14 million, you realize no savings in that. The savings occurs because of combining schools and, and, you know, saving on personnel costs. So, any, any renovations that you do, if you just, if you just do renovations, you realize no savings. If you do partial renovations and partial new bid, new builds, you cut down on the savings, so it would cost additional city appropriation or city taxpayer dollars. Now, every penny that you guys give us are taxpayer dollars in the first place, but what we're saying is, don't give us anymore. Just continue to give us less than you did two years ago. I mean, that's, you know, we're not even asking to get back to where we were two years ago. Continue to give us less than you did two years ago for the next 30 years, and, you know, we can make this building plan work. Now, we'll probably have to come back in the future and say, hey, we need a roof at Virginia High. Hey, our teachers are, are getting behind competitively, you know, they can walk across the street to Bristol, Tennessee and make 6,000 additional dollars per year. So, you know, I think our school board is trying to say, we're going to have to ask the city for more money in the future. Let's take care of this in the most economically feasible way that we possibly can.
I'm glad you mentioned teacher pay because I didn't actually realize when I first started here that it was separate, when we were talking about employee, city employees getting a raise and then school system employees getting a raise. School system employees got a raise this past year, and that money came from the state.
Mostly from the state.
So, I'd love to get to the point, and I don't know how long it would take us to get there, but if we ever, let's say, some economic development opportunities happen, the city's growing, when we're able to give city employees a raise, that also means teachers as well. So, if the state can't give teachers a raise, it's okay, we can handle it here, we got it. I'd love to get to that point.
Yeah, we're not against that either.
Now, you mentioned, okay, the original plan, you came and asked for the same thing last year, and that total payment over 30 years was going to be maybe, yeah, 36, 37 million. And we had some financial questions. We said, let's, you know, wait, y'all need to look at more things, and with the interest rates proposed, it could be, yeah, maybe 30, 31, 32 million, depending on what exactly that rate is. So, in a way, and this wasn't by design, this wasn't the plan, but in a way, by waiting, technically, you could say we saved, what, $5 million in interest, a rough amount?
Yeah, and, and if you would have asked the talking heads that question this time last year, there was no way interest rates were going down. And a credit to this council and this leadership, there was no way that our, our bond rating was going to go up either. And so, you know, a combination of those two things almost puts us in a perfect storm. And the fact that we can, we can knock a huge, huge need off of your list, y'all, you guys have such a huge list of needs that this city has, we get that. The elementary schools are one of those lists. We have an opportunity right here for you to take, knock that huge $20 million item off your list and not give us a penny more. I mean, I, you know, I don't know how else to say it any better than that. I mean, we, we get that you need more police cars, we get that you have some issues with some of your other structures here in the city. We get that your employees haven't had the raises that they deserve over the last several years. We've got huge payments waiting for us at the falls and the dump and all those other things. We get it. We're trying to be as financially, fiduciarily, as responsible as we possibly can, and I don't think that our school board gets enough credit for the, for asking, as Mr. Osborne said, for what we can do to, to make things work when other places across the state, not anywhere in southwest Virginia, none of my good friends around here, but are asking for Taj Mahals whenever they build new schools. That's not what we're doing. And our school board, I don't think, gets enough credit for that.
All right, well, on that note, we have, we've hit an hour with you standing up here, so I'm sure you would like to take a break. So, we're going to go ahead and close out Item 6. I appreciate you coming and speaking with us and, and answering any questions we've got. I, I see you, hold on. Answering any questions we've got for you, and I believe the anticipation is we'll be discussing this again in two weeks with a different agenda item.
Can I ask one more quick question?
Go ahead.
Well, did you know the estimate of the middle school and high school mold issue, roughly?
Uh, the one that we, that.
You said there was an issue with the middle school and high school of molding and stuff?
Yeah, we had, we, we were able to take care of that, it was very, very minimal. There was some issues that folks thought were mold or mildew, but we have them tested, they were not. We, we did have some aspergillus and some chromotium and some, you know, on a teacher's desk and in a, a science lab cabinet, but we did not have any black mold or, or anything like that.
What were those two words you used?
Uh, yeah, don't, don't quote those.
Can you spell them?
Were they running the video?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to go back and check, check the tape.
Yeah, I just, I just kind of breezed through them just to.
That was good.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much, and I'm going to take the public comment from the back, so you're done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Jackie.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne, and to the council. I'm Jackie Knopflin, taxpayer, homes, land, pastor of Household Faith Community Church. I was glad to see some of the minister alliance here, the organization we are, a group of leaders. Every time I see a presentation, I say kudos to Dr. Parenton because he proves the point. He's the reason why this school shouldn't go up Period X to seven. But when your minds are already made up, all the talk, all the presentation and so forth, you can hardly be changed, especially when we're talking about, we want the very best for all of our kids. Van Pelt is the very best right now for kids as far as the building is concerned, the computers and things of that nature, but the other schools have something that nowhere else in this area unless you are from a community school has, and that's that one-on-one attention from the teachers and their instructors. Also, too, we're going to, we're going to lose 16 teachers, we're going to lose nine administrators. Another question that wasn't addressed tonight at the last school board meeting was the city transit was going to go in and out and bring and bus in, in that area. Now, Mr. Hartley, you was there, and Mr. Osborne, you was there, and I know you caught that and heard that the city was going to pay for the transit to go through that area. So, with the city transit going through the area along with all the buses and the car pooling and so forth, that's going to be a great issue. But I have something more important than a survey online that doesn't have names attached to them. I have a survey here that we went door to door, they were shocked to see Jackie Knopflin at their door, but if I could get to their door, I did go, and here are close to 200. I have more sheets that are coming in, that's the reason why I wasn't able to make a copy for all of you all, but I can leave this here with you so that you can see it and so forth. I'm going to need a copy back in my own cell. But this is, these are people that are not ashamed to write, that are not ashamed to give their address nor their telephone numbers on here, against the school going up to Van Pelt. Not just Van Pelt area, but in the Washington Lee area, in the Johnson Court, in the Rice Terrace area, even in the high school area. You will notice that these addresses are from citizens and their taxpayers and their parents, and they have grave concern. Sir, I know it's, we've talked ourselves to death, I know we've been through this, I know you're looking for an answer, but I honestly thought I was going to cave on the Washington and Lee plan because it was bringing that area, those schools, those students that need a, a new school, is that area right there that needs a new school. So, I thought that we were headed, I thought that we were headed into that area, and now we're back to what was dead on arrival. And I think that we should take our time to take a look, and I want you to take a look at this, sir, and make sure that you know that there are citizens out there that are dead-set against us. Thank you, Mr. Mumpower, for what you said was true. This is going to impact a great number of parents.
All right, thank you very much. I, I will hit a couple of things that, that you admitted, and if you will give that to, to the clerk so we can see it. I think the number that the doc, that Dr. Perrigen had said as far as teachers who would no longer be employed was six, not 16, is that right?
It would be six, excuse me, six grade level teachers, nine teachers, so, but only one, we don't, we don't have that many.
Mm-hmm.
It would be just one.
Okay, so, so there was that, and I know we had, I'd actually received a phone call from someone for the flyers you all were distributing, and I've, I only had one, but it was a lady, she didn't have the full story, and I kind of talked to her about it, and, you know, she came out fine on the other side, and so did I, and we, we ended the phone call as friends. So, I'd say there, you know, there's sometimes, you know, lack of, you know, understanding and knowledge and, and facts on some of these things, and it's, it's, I think it's wonderful that we can get the information out. You know, the more that people know about this, the better. As far as the transit, I know there have been some discussions on that, and Randy, would you like to address that?
I'm sure, Jay Dietrich, who's in charge of our transit department, he was part of the meeting that we had last week, in regards to how do we address these issues that we know might come up with Van Pelt. They are looking at different potential routes, and how they can actually run a transit bus up to Van Pelt, if necessary. We do know it would probably have a substantial impact on other stops throughout the city, as far as timing goes as well. However, I do understand that the school system provides rides to, for children, I believe, in certain situations, and we are talking about how that could potentially happen with, well, for example, a child gets sick at 10 o'clock in the morning. If a parent were to try to catch a transit bus, come to the school, it could potentially be an hour, hour and a half, before they could get to the school, depending on what time the last transit bus ran near their house. And I do know right now that schools transport children...
All day.
All day long, in, I guess, personal vehicles or school vehicles, and we're working on a plan to where they can continue to do that as well. But we do understand the needs of some parents that may need additional transportation, either for PTA meetings, sporting events, and everything else that goes on in the school plays. So, we are working on that plan to try to address that, and whether that be done through school buses or city transit, we'll have that plan addressed, too.
One, one thing that I would add to that, we lovingly call that our school, Scoober program. You know, because of foster care laws, and because of McKinney-Vento Act, we are required, if a child is living in one school zone, and they're placing a foster care home in another school zone, or if a child is living in this school zone and becomes homeless, and has to go live with a grandparent in this school zone, we have to provide transportation back to their original school. And so, we are driving buses, you, you probably see buses and school cars going across the division at kind of odd times of the day, that's probably because that we're transporting those kids there. We would realize some cost savings, we've not been able to identify how much, but we would realize some cost savings, because currently, we're driving some students from Stonewall Jackson area to Van Pelt, for those reasons I mentioned, and other students who live in Van Pelt, down to the Washington Lee zone. If all of our elementary schools are on one campus, all of our elementary schools would be on one campus, and we wouldn't have that transportation going all over the city like that. The other thing is with, we could, if this does work out, and they're able to add a stop at Van Pelt, we could use some of our federal dollars to reimburse the city, if they allow those parents to ride the transit for free. And so, we do have some options to make that work. We, you, all you have to do is ask the folks at the housing authority, our schools go out of their way to take registration to our families' homes, to take parent-teacher conferences to our families' homes, and that wouldn't change, just because we changed the location of our school. We understand that that's a serious need that we have in our city, and that would continue. One other thing that I'd add on, on a little different note, is I think there's, you know, some miscommunication. Folks read the newspaper and, and draw one conclusion, they see something on Facebook and draw another conclusion. I would welcome anybody in our community who has questions, or concerns, or has better ideas about what we're talking about. I'll sit down and have a question and answer session, and won't even bore them with a long, hour and a half long presentation. So, I would make that available to anybody who has questions.
Thank you. All right, thank you again. All right, on to item seven, approval of amended minutes staff report.
Counsel, there, there was an error in the minutes for March 27th. The consent agenda was approved after a closed session, and it was not captured in the minutes, so we just need you to approve that amended version.
All right, so I am looking for a motion, a second, to take action on this.
Move that we approve the amended minutes as presented.
Second.
All right, so, motion from the vice mayor, and second from Mr. Farnham. Is there any discussion we want to have on this? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborn?
Yes. Consent agenda.
Before we get to the consent agenda, I'd like to move that we make a change, a move that we pull out of the consent agenda, the street closure request for the annual Christmas parade, and postpone that.
Is there a certain date you want to postpone it to?
Until the next meeting Tuesday, November 26.
All right, so we have a, we have a, is that your motion, are you making a motion?
Yes.
So, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of the Christmas parade's street closure request, and we'll postpone it until the 26th. So, I need a second.
I'll, I'll second that, but I want to have a little discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, will that give enough time for the parade, if it's the 26th, given that that's like to...
Yes, we're working in conjunction with Bristol, Tennessee, on an issue in regards to a parade participant that will be here, and due to a last-minute detail that came up this afternoon, probably about 4:30, that I was made aware of, we need to just postpone this until we can have Bristol, Tennessee, and Bristol, Virginia on the same page, as to how we're going to address a certain issue.
But we'll still have enough time?
Yes.
Okay. That, that was more my concern.
And I know I'm, I'm meeting with Mayor Fire Robin on Thursday, so hopefully, maybe we can discuss it then, and get things fixed up.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion on the table, and a second to approve everything except for the Christmas parade, street closure.
I do have a, a few questions here.
Go ahead.
Under the consent agenda, the $46,000 for paving, 20-plus thousand of it is for asphalt, for the fuel tanks that we just installed?
That's correct.
And those tanks are installed where?
Out, at the public works, where they've always been.
Okay, that, that's what I thought. Would we not be better served in the city to use that same, that money, instead of doing paving in public works, in the, in the landfill, to straighten out the lot and pave the dog kennel?
The dog kennel, we're going to address that in this upcoming year's budget, and I believe that in order, and Wallace can correct me, but I, I think those areas have to be paved, due to the fact that it's a gas tank.
When we put the tanks in, we had to dig up quite a bit of the area, and we had to put in some new concrete areas, so we, we tore up quite a bit of pavement in the process, so it has to be put back.
Okay, so that's part of the requirements?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that was my only comment.
All right, thank you. The clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborn?
Yes. All right, item E is a closed session. Do we want to make any changes to this, or do we want to proceed?
A move that we postpone item E. Until a later date.